Missing meeting is to discuss the 2026 budget. Start with a roll call. I'm Madeline Palmquist, District Eight.
Tim Disarcie, Finance Director.
Ryan Austin, District One.
Jeff Patschel, District Four.
Matt Zachar, Mayor.
Jake Catanha, District Five.
Dennis Pollak, District Six.
Thank you. And we've got Patrick on Zoom?
Yes.
Great. We're moving on to item three, Mission, Vision and Values. Let me turn this one over to Mayor Zachar.
All right, thank you. This is Palmquist. So, we spent quite a bit of time between Emily and myself and Ryan in HR. Just, I had asked everybody to kind of be a part of the building process of our mission, vision, values. We sent out the paperwork, got together first with the department heads and had a conversation, a couple hour meeting and talked with them at length afterwards. Got some consensus on where they wanted to go and then we took it to the employees and got a a good share of the employees to reply as to what they wanted. And all those findings are in the, in the paperwork to just give us some ideas as to where, where we want to go. I guess my reason for doing this is, in my past experience, it's good for me as a leader and for everybody as a part of the organization to just have a, a solid foundation as to where, who we are and what we're attempting, what we're looking to accomplish and how we're looking to accomplish that. And I think, I guess through my campaign and how I feel about how we should run a city, I think that it's fair to all the residents and businesses for them to also know how we see ourselves and, and how we conduct our business. In that way, we have a framework to hold people accountable to how sometimes people are, are acting within the organization towards our residents, towards our customers, and we're able to adjust accordingly, whether it's through behaviors or through, you know, changes that need to be made. So that being said, I, I wanted to reach out to you guys. I do, you know, I, I know there's different ways that people look at government and, you know, sometimes it's easier to be more contentious and kind of fight against each other, but ultimately, I do see all of us as mayor and council as the leaders of the community. Not saying that I want everybody to get along all the time and, and, and vote the same way. I think everybody votes the way their heart takes them. But at the same time, I think the community wants to know that we are on the same page and working for their interests. And so I felt it was best to just have a conversation here tonight and get your input as to what you see from the results and if there's anything that stands out that you want us to take to the table and, and work harder on in bringing things together, or if you have new things that aren't on here that you feel we should be looking at. That's what I'd like to get from you at this point. And then we will take that information from you guys and sit down again at the table and formulate a solid mission, vision, values, bring them back to you guys for, for consensus on if we're good with moving forward with that so we can make up some nice posters, pictures and be able to put those in strategic locations so that we can return to them every time we need a refresher as to what we're working towards and how we're working towards that goal. I guess, that being said, I open it up to you as to if you have feedback for me and what your thoughts are.
How were the questions developed?
Uh, that was something that myself and Emily and Ryan sat down and kind of weeded through like what would bring out for the mission, the vision and the values, what, we didn't want to get too long and too carried away with questions. So we came, tried to make it as concise as possible to get the, the information that we felt we needed out of it.
Just in a quick review of the responses, I appreciate the time that the employees took to respond to this and seeing the way in which the questions are answered makes me think that there was, there was thought put behind it and not just selections of answers. So that's great. I also think that it's good for us as a council to be on the same page as where we're going as a government because if the, I'm just going to use two examples, if strong public safety is number one in our eyes and that is not something that the rest of the organization is working for, we'll always be at odds. But if we can all agree that we want to do on top of our list is meet the needs of the public. I think the way we get there might be a little different and that's where we'll have good conversation and discussion. But all of us being on the same page and having on paper, knowing that meeting the needs of the public is our goal, I think points us all in the right direction. So thank you for this.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I, I think it will help me too as, as the leader of the organization right now to just know that as I'm moving forward, I'm moving in the direction that everybody is, is geared towards and, and good with so that we're not wasting time and energy going down paths that we don't need to at this point in time. So, and, and there's a few ways to do this. I knew it would be a little bit awkward. We weren't, we're not going to get into a, you know, making sticky notes again and all that and putting them on boards, although, you know, there's a time and place for that. But if, if it's something that you guys want to take some time also and look at, we can certainly kind of just give it a week and send in, you know, send an email to say, you know, I looked it over. These are the things that I think are important to me. We can take a consensus that way and then put it together. And like I said, I know behind the scenes, we'll do some more work on bringing all the ideas together and make a concise statement for each of these and then bring it back to you guys, so. Yes.
Is there data beneath the data? So for example, there's seventy-seven responses from city employees. Like where do those individu-, what departments do those individuals work in, for example? Do we include all the departments and only seventy-seven responded? Could it be
Yeah.
heavily, you know, more in, Tim's department obviously wouldn't be, you don't have the people, but I'm just using it as an example, like the data itself, have, do we have a, a gather from across the city equally weighted or, you know, all that kind of reads into how I would interpret this personally.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and we do have more of the information that, you know, we could bring forward or send to you to try to get a gauge. Like you're saying, if public safety is high on a lot of people's priorities, did that come from the public safety people? Rightly so, I guess. I understand where you're coming from. Let me check with Emily and I could, we could send you out all the surveys. I don't, I don't necessarily know. I'll have to check. I apologize for not knowing this offhand if they're, if the names are on them and where they
Yeah, no names necessary, of course, on surveys like these, but
Certainly could get departments.
Yeah, just the data, you know, where it's coming from. I think an internal pulse is always good. Not to this survey, but maybe something similar, maybe an external survey as well to get a pulse on where the community heads. And I think we're going to get into this a little bit in the next one, but a lot of that is done through elections, of course, right? Especially when you have a lot of candidates coming out and they take, you know, completely opposite stances. But when we talk about like things for the budget and we get into that process, and of course, that's, that's a time where people come out and su- support, you know, what they might believe in or a certain aspect of the city that they feel strongly about. And we get in this situation where of course, like everybody wants to, everything to either stay the same and also get better at the same time and hopefully not have to spend too much money out of that. And it gets into this juggling of like what we get from the tax levy versus, you know, what we have to take out for debt versus what we are, are funding. And that's always an interesting time because there's a question on here that I see some of the staff responded to, which is forward thinking. And if we get, you know, if the public, for example, wanted us to be much more forward thinking and they said, look, you know, we want, we want to invest in the infrastructure or the park system or our current programs and expand them. Even if that takes out a little bit of debt, it's an investment, you know, we believe it, it might come back. I think information on that would be important when we're making those decisions on if, if it's about, you know, forward thinking and maybe using debt to do that, or if it's about what we internally believe sometimes and have to juggle is that we really need to make the city manageable financially. And, and where we land on that, because I, I would just roll that into the, the next item is, is just that's kind of where we go with that. I mean, we all have our personal beliefs and then our constituents. As I just went out and talked to several of them, you know, getting their signatures and support to be their alderman again. You can see they are, they're view the city in a totally different perspective than we do. And they don't really have an idea of how all this internal stuff works. They don't have access or they, time to watch the meetings and really see what's going on. So of course they'll, you know, talk to their alderman or maybe call you or call down here and kind of see what's going on. But a lot of times there's stuff that we do or the city does that people don't see coming or they don't understand why and they might not reach out. So if they don't reach out, it's hard to explain that to them, but they'll, they might ask you when they see, and it'd just be interesting. I know there's software that does this different things. Just where the pulses of the community on this. I've seen the county has done some stuff on this, but while we have time in between now and then, like as we go forward and represent our people, I mean, where are they at? What do, how do they want us to move forward in our mission and values? Because we can set some internally. Of course, we're the elected officials. I think that's part of what they choose us to do, but it would be interesting to see what they think our mission, vision and value should be as well.
Yeah, we did send out, as part of this process, we sent out the communication survey when we were working towards the website. And that helped. That was to the community and we got a couple hundred, I think, you know, but it was, again, my whole platform, part of it was just getting our ability to communicate to, with the residents and businesses much faster, easier, whether it's just throwing out one question for them to be able to answer and be able to get, because again, you, you don't want to have something where they're sitting there for an hour, three hours, like, you know, we're putting out more information. We set up a new studio at WRCM so we can do more of a, you know, podcast situation where people can get together and talk about why are the roads closed? Like, why is that inters-, why is high streets still, intersections still closed? And be able to get a, a, you know, a five minute video out there to explain what's going on and get that communication out there because we have so many different forms right now that are, you know, some people are watching the news. Younger generations aren't. The newspaper is kind of fading. You got the radio. But in the end, we're all moving towards the videos on the phones that, and if we can get that on our new webpage so that we can get more communication to them and have them, have them have the ability to respond as positive as possible, hopefully like constructive feedback, I think it would be great and that's what I'm working towards. And I agree with you. If, if I hear what you're saying that you would like us to kind of send this out into the community to find out what their idea of mission, vision, values would be for their government, local government, is that kind of what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Which is fine, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think in internal culture, you know, there's a lot of employees that work for the city is, is important. But as we make decisions on, you know, what that internal culture might be or, or the direction of the city government, its mission, vision, values, getting some feedback from the public. And I, I will say one thing, I think that since you've become mayor, you have done a great job at getting information out and I've watched a lot of those videos. They're very informative in, in the information that we get out to the public. I think when I look at it and told, it's, it's, it's almost, it's the feedback loop though. It's, it's a, like, if you put a video on Facebook from the mayor's office and you talk about, you know, what's going on, people comment and then it's like, well, do those people live in Rapids or YouTube, for example, you know, how many people are, are seeing that? And then what do they think about that? And it would just be your videos. It'd be in general, just, it's hard to gauge really where people are at unless we can get to directly connecting with them. And it, it's almost the conversation you would have in a, a company about your customers. Although, you know, we, it operates a little bit different because we're a government, but at the same time, constituents are the, the people we answer to and they're not customers, but they are the ones that we represent and we do want to get their opinion. And I, I just feel like that's hard to gauge sometimes. As much as we do put stuff out, that they're just not a feedback loop.
Yeah, we do have, like, for a while, we turned the comments off on the web, uh, face, uh, face, what's it called? Facebook? And, uh, we turn them back on again, but you, we have to be selective in, you know, what we respond to because it can become the wild, wild west out there real quick. But it does help if we can just get information out and somebody has a valid question to be able to answer them. I think it's, it's important to be able to do that, but, you know, I, I guess, what are you guys' thoughts in terms of being able to reach out to the community?
No, I, I agree. I think, you know, this is part of the equation. The community and then the businesses would, would be the other factors that I think we would have to, you know, get that information and, and with that information, I think we can develop the principles that would guide us to prioritize the needs of, of our community.
Okay. All right. So I'm hearing right now, take the time to reach out to the residents to the, to the greatest extent possible and possibly work with the chamber to be able to get some feedback from businesses as to what they, they want to see also. Anyone else? Jeff?
I give you a lot of credit for trying to clarify what we're trying to do. We're a team and we all got to be working for the same goals. If we're all heading in the right direction with the right attitude, this should make it a whole lot easier. There's going to be feedback. Everybody's going to have this that they don't like or that they don't like, but for the most part, I think we can get a lot done coming up with a clear mission statement. Establishing communication with the residents and the constituents on a whole variety of issues.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm all for this.
Dean?
Yeah, and it does seem that the community does seem to be more engaged as of late. A lot of people, I, it's interesting. I don't, um, like when Polly or somebody watches the, our meetings on Facebook.
Yeah.
It seems like there's still hardly anybody on there. But then I get comments. So I saw the meeting last night. So apparently people aren't just commenting or acknowledging that they're there, you know? But it just, it does seem, people, like the most recent thing with the, with the ATV thing. Lots of people talked about it, not just because they heard it on the news. They actually were, they're starting to be more engaged and, and I think that the fact that I agree with Jeff, that, um, it's a great idea to reach out and I think right now is a really ripe time to do it because it does seem like people are interested. I think that does happen in a, like a national election year and everything. People are starting to get more involved in, in change and I think that's good that we're reaching out. So any way to gauge what the public's looking for would be a good idea on our part, for sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Dennis? Did you want?
Well, I, I've never gotten any complaints from anybody and everybody seems to be, I know by approach anybody here, I have, uh, I'm treated well and don't have any trouble with anybody. If we didn't have any problems, I guess we would straighten it out. But far as, I, I think our staff does a pretty good job with the public. You know, unless there's a problem there that somebody isn't saying anything about, but I don't, I don't see it though. I think, uh, I think they, the staff does the best they can with, with questions that people have.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think in my twenty years being in the city, I think I've experienced through business and just through the residents. My, my take on it was always a, a strong disconnect. And I, and I still hear a lot of that of like, I don't know what they do and I don't, I don't necessarily care. And that, that could just be the way government functions, but I think we, I guess, while I'm in this, in the seat, I guess, my, my goal is to make sure that we do everything we possibly can to just make sure the communication is there for the people who want it. I mean, if people have their head in the sand so far that you can't get it out, that's, there's nothing we can do about that. But for the people who really care and want to be engaged, I want to make sure they have every avenue to be able to do that. And then also when there are issues, which we've experienced some with, you know, things in the community, I think we need to, the, the residents need to know that they have a way of communicating those issues, that they're being heard and then that action is being taken in order to help remedy that. And I think that's been lacking too and, uh, for quite a while. So those are the reasons why I feel like I want to keep working towards this goal.
Well, I, I think myself, I think since you've been mayor though, you've, you've really had the right approach. And this is a good example right here. And I think if, you know, as long as all the aldermen realize that when they have to discuss something that they can just do it and get along with everybody and use good common sense.
Yeah.
But I think what you've done here so far has been very good.
Yeah, without a, thank you. I appreciate that. And without a doubt, face-to-face conversations are the best way to do business, no matter what, but it's hard to do that in a, in a size, even in a smaller city like this, to really be able to take care of business face-to-face with everybody that's got a, an issue, so. Um, so anybody else? Otherwise, I think what I'm hearing is let's take it to the residents and the businesses and get their feedback. Do you want, I think after that, I will work with some internal folks to, to kind of bring together an initial mission, vision, value statement that we can then bring to you guys using all the data that we have. And then from there, we can talk about if it's way off your mark or if it's close and we can tweak it from there. Does that make sense? Any other questions or anything? I appreciate everybody's input and your support. Thank you.
Right, moving on to 2025 budget feedback. I started with a list, but it is totally open to whatever feedback we would like to give to make the 2026 process better. Timeline, did anybody have concerns with when we started talking about the budget? The steps we took during the process? Jeff?
Well, me being a newcomer here, I've only been on this for nine months. It would really help if these budget discussions got started a whole lot earlier.
Agreed.
We kind of got backed into a corner with a few cases this last budget season and like I said before, I'm new to this. If we would start talking about the budgets maybe as early as April, May, June to kind of get a preliminary thing and see where we're at as far as expenditures and the needs and stuff like that. That would give everybody a heads up and we could start to work on potential problems three, four months ahead of what we experienced last year. I think that would be a great asset. The, the, the Southwood County Humane Society, bring them in here and get a report out of them. The Chamber of Commerce does seem to come and speak to us on a pretty regular basis from what I've seen. You know, that would be the one thing that I would like to see a little bit more communication, I guess, you know, departments and all that.
Dean?
Yeah, we had, um, done this, uh, that's probably the third year in a row. We've talked about doing this earlier. Tim, what, when, how could we speed up the, having the departments having their numbers to you earlier?
Uh, just, I mean, basically just kind of requesting that they, you know, giving them a, a deadline that, that's earlier than what it was. And then it all depends on, to the process of, you know, with, you know, historically, we've kind of done an executive budget. So the department heads put their budget together. And then it's, you know, vetted internally by the mayor and the department heads. And then from there, then it kind of comes to the, the committee of the whole. So it'd be kind of looking at that timeline and how the mayor feels about how he wants to approach the budget, but you know, a lot of it is too, is that, you know, you can start looking at the expenditure side, obviously, you know, with, you know, the known. But, you know, the revenue side sometimes is a little delayed just because we just don't get some of the estimates from the state of Wisconsin until later in the process. So like our transportation aides usually don't come in till, you know, September, but that doesn't mean that we can't use, you know, some placeholder estimates of what do we think it might be.
Yeah, I would just, it just seems like, I mean, summer's usually pretty quiet. We could literally start talking about some of this stuff at least a couple of months earlier than we do. It just seems to me.
So, coming from the, the project world, I see the budget and what we're budgeting for being more of a set of goals that we plan to accomplish in the year from each department. And I don't know if I necessarily need the exact figures for those, but more so of what are we going to do in community development this year? What's the plan? And if there's something that looks like it doesn't fit with where we're going as a city, then I don't think it's even worth the time for the departments to try to figure out that budget that would go along with that. But I don't know if we've ever done an approach like that or if it's even possible from a municipality perspective. Drake?
Yeah, so the budget and the city finances in general, so the one thing I do think setting goals as a council as a whole for the year certainly can help. I'll give an example. A couple of years ago, we do this, we've been doing this dance with the budget and it always passes without any changes. Uh, but at, before we got to that point, we took a poll or a vote and Mayor Blazer had, you know, are we going to bond or not? You know, and I think that's a good question we should ask every year. Instead of waiting till the end, after the department of budgets come in, they're developing their budgets around the determination that we are bonding, that we're taking debt out. More common word, but, and then we get those budgets and then we're saying, maybe we don't want to take as much debt out or are we taking more out? And we get in this conversation. So I think upfront, before the budgets are being developed, we should always indicate whether or not we're going to be willing to take out debt to operate the government the next year. That, the, and what amount, right? So then when they go and do their departmental budgets, they structure it around that. Are we doing the, the same amount as last year? Nothing ever costs the same, so it's always more. What would that look like if we just did the exact same thing in city government this year as we did last year? And those numbers change. We've seen revenue come in from different places over the past couple of years. We've also seen expenditures that maybe weren't in the capital improvement, um, come in and, and we got to take care of. But, uh, overall, I think we really need to figure that part out and overall, the budget process, it's, it's feedback. So I'll just give some feedback. It doesn't work. I mean, it's, it doesn't work. It's frustrating the way we've been doing it. We, we have, this goes back a few years now. I don't, I, I can't put an exact start date on it. But we go through this budget process. Everybody comes here. All the aldermen, the mayor, city staff are here. They're having to present their budget. The residents are here. And there's all this drama. There's all this proposals and at the end of every single one of those years, we could have just passed the executive budget the first time around without wasting any of that time. So what I would say is I just hope we don't come back at whenever we start budget time and do the same thing we've been doing. Because it, it doesn't work. I mean, the proof is in the pudding. We've, we've done it. We don't change a single thing. And if, I mean, I, I do trust the mayor, but if, if we are just going to pass the executive budget right away, then let's just do it instead of making people think they're going to lose this service or this person, you know, a department's going to ask for this and they think they're going to get it, but maybe they're not. Because we've wasted a whole lot of time in not getting anything done on the budgets in the past few years.
So how do we, how do we change? What's the one thing that we can change to make sure that we don't go back into that cycle? What's the one thing that we can change to make sure that we don't go back into that cycle of having meetings to talk about things, to come back and just approve the executive budget?
Sure, so, I'll, uh, the committee of the whole just started taking the budget up around the time it started to not be able to get anything done. And I, I don't fault anyone for that. I just think when you have eight people on a council, you don't have a tie-breaking vote. We've had things that were four-four. And there's a lot of different people speaking to different points of the budget, and it's just a way more complex meeting. My first years on council, it went through finance. And you had the three people who work on finance over the year go through the budget. And in that case, you only needed, you know, a couple of people on board to make one change or another. And that was all then presented to council as the finance report is. And at that time, if the council had some large disagreement with what the finance committee did, those were pulled out over the months at common council meetings. So essentially, you were getting the committee of the whole, you were getting it over a series of, you know, four, five months, whenever the budget process starts, and it was being done that way. And it was, from the public's perspective, it was a similar process. But it, it just gets tough when all eight are in here. And we, even when we make a decision, we, we ended up reversing it. I don't know, it just hasn't worked. And I saw in the past that, uh, and the mayor chooses the committees that, whatever the mayor's vision was for the city financially, they could set that committee, and that committee could comb through those things with the departments. And then bring that report to council. So, I don't know if that's the change to make back to. Background, if you weren't here on why we went to committee of the whole, people felt like, you know, not, not being able to have a, a say in that conversation at finance or a vote. They wanted to be more a part of the budget. And I understand that. I was not on finance at the time, so I, you know, certainly understood it. And we tried it, and I feel like it didn't work. So, maybe it's time to take a look at something. That's one idea. Another would be to just look at what we've done in the previous three years and completely re-envision it and how we do it. So, anything we've done that has been proven to not work, we just don't do anymore, and we go a totally separate direction, and the goals would be one of them. We could be upfront about what the goals are, decide that, and then figure out how we're going to work to them. But budget discussions are always tough, because if you want to lower the budget, you're talking people. And if you make that proposal at the end of the year, that's not giving, to reduce the budget, that's not giving people a good amount of time to readjust their lives, which is one reason people don't, you know, vote for budget cuts. Uh, so, I think you just got to be upfront about what the goals are, and then work towards those, or do it in a different process and, and let it be vetted in a committee format.
Brian?
Yeah, I think we need to rip the Band-Aid off, for lack of a better term. I mean, it's either, are we going to bond, or are we going to try to balance the budget? And if, if, if we're going to bond, you know, obviously, you know, we're paying down our debt, we're paying down our debt in a fashion where, um, you know, we're going to pay it off at the rate we are. Or, you know, if we're going to make those cuts and balance the budget, you have to come with what cuts you're going to make. And, and, and that's just going to be how it is. I mean, that, that's the only way. I mean, our, our budget process has to be grounded in consistency and accountability. I think we must ensure that no department faces the uncertainty of sudden cuts. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, those cuts threaten the quality of life for our residents. So, I think we need to get out in front of it and decide which way we're going to go as a council, and then we execute.
Dean?
Well, the, the other thing is that we spend an awful lot of time on hot-button issues. This year, it was the Humane Society. The previous year, I think we had, um, the chamber, whether we were going to fund the 25 grand for the chamber or not, what they were, we spent hours and hours on that. And, and we got away from the talk, I just, the, we get away from the big picture item, and which is really, I still think, this goes back to the first thing we were talking about tonight, the communication with the public. I think the public really needs to understand that we're borrowing money to fix potholes. And I don't think the general public has that concept. We fight all, we spied for hours and hours about whether to give 75,000, or 25,000, or 50,000, or whatever to the Humane Society. And yet, okay, so we'll give them what they need, but then we're going to borrow for the potholes. And then we, we, um, the year we had, the year we had the ARPA fund, it was a lot easier because we had that big number. But we still thought about what we were going to do with that. And, um, and that year, we had, we had, we almost had like a, a pass that year, if you will. We fixed the, we did some needed repairs and such. But we, it's, at some point, it, it's critical that we address this, this debt. And, um, and the only way you can address debt is by eliminating existing finances that might not necessarily be needed. And, um, and the way to start thinking about that is, again, back to what Jeff said. Earlier in the year, we started thinking about, how are we going to accomplish that, this big picture? Because I still see the biggest thing is our, the city's debt. And, um, we never talk about servicing that debt. Or we do at the budget time, in, you know, in, in this room, and that. But it never's, the public doesn't see it that way. I really think that we do have a messaging issue on that regard. Because that place got, we got packed, and the place was wall-to-wall, the Humane Society. And we were these evil people that were going to not take care of the animals. And, um, bottom line is, is they left, and yeah, we're still borrowing a bunch of money to fix the roads. And, um, and that's where our big challenge comes. How do we address the debt? And we've got to cut back in certain ways. And, um, and that's why it's good that we call this meeting, we start thinking about this at this time of year. Because at some point next year, we're going to, I mean, I would think we would want to try to get at this a little earlier and try to, as we develop with this relationship with our constituents that we're trying to do in the first thing, we, um, we start talking about all the great things we have, but we also start, want to let them know where we're at. You know, um, it's been, um, I don't know, we'll ever recover from the mill. But it's, it's, it could happen, but it's, we still, I mean, we're tearing it down now. So, and, you know, we lost 900 jobs when that thing closed, and, and it's been tough ever since. And budget time's tough, because we've lost a lot of tax revenue for that. So, just got to look at it that way, I think. Thanks.
I have a question for Tim. Since you were here for both of the processes from committee of the whole to finance. And I don't think, or I can't remember saying thank you for all of the work that you put into the budget year after year. I do appreciate and want to make sure that we're acknowledging the time that's spent from your aspect and the finance department's aspect. And I would be in favor of changing a process that makes it less stressful on you around November, December, October. How do you feel about either the committee of the whole or the property and finance committee processes for budgeting?
Um, I, you know, as far as, you know, obviously, it's like, I remember years and years ago, you know, it was usually kind of an executive budget, kind of a semi-executive budget. It was like, the mayor would have input on it, but, you know, it would go to the finance committee. And I remember we'd meet up in the third-floor conference room, like, every Monday and Wednesday night through like September, through October. And then it kind of, then it transformed into more of a, you know, getting away from all those, those were a lot of meetings, and going to the more of the executive budget and things like that. And then obviously with, you know, but it would still go to the finance committee. And, and then obviously, that, the change came is when, you know, all the persons that weren't on the finance committee kind of questioned like, well, we don't have the ability to make a change until the very end of the process, kind of that final review. And so that's why we went to the committee of the whole. I think both work, but I think that if it's going to be in the finance committee, you definitely have to start those meetings earlier so that, I mean, because if, if you start them too late, by the time the changes get to the council meeting, you know, you're already at the end of that process. So I think if it would go back to where the finance committee review, need to start those earlier. So there is an opportunity at the council meetings for other alderpersons to have their input on that. And then also, then it would be what, if there wasn't a change made, and you're an alderperson on, that's not on the finance committee, when would you be able to voice a concern about something that you might want to change in the budget? Would that occur at the council meeting? That then, you know, every council meeting, you know, where the finance committee report comes up is that you're opening up the whole budget discussion? So, you know, I, you know, I think the committee of the whole works, just because then everyone has the opportunity. It's just a matter of what this body really wants, and how much input they want, and how much time they want to invest, and how many meetings. I mean, no one likes a lot of meetings, but, you know, when you're talking about the entire budget and, you know, and going through the department head reports. I mean, it could be a combination, where you have kind of, maybe the finance department kind of meeting with the departments, going through that stuff. But then maybe we schedule some committee of the holes where, okay, here's kind of where we're at, and maybe get some input from other alderpersons that can go back to the finance committee to look at some of that stuff.
Thank you. Matt?
So, just for clarification, um, it's probably about three years ago that, that I was the one who kind of spoke up and said, um, just that. Like, it got down to the very end, and, and then I'm just kind of hearing about all the budgets at one time. And it was pretty overwhelming, and I thought very fruitless in terms of, you know, what, what changes do we make now? And we talked about some stuff, but in the end, we were under a time crunch, we had to pass it. And then we went right into the debt, and, and maybe I was overwhelmed or whatever. But I opened my mouth, and then the next year, they made me chair of the finance committee. So, so then, that's when I said, well, now I kind of took what I said last year and said, well, one, I want the committee of the whole to be a part of it early. And, and then we probably had too many meetings. I, I, I really appreciated the way, uh, Matty ran it this year, where it was way more efficient. You know, I think what you're asking for, Jake, can be accomplished. Like, you can't, I mean, you could set up finance committees, you know, over and over again, but then you have a whole bunch of finance committees, but you got to publish them and that. But what you could do is the, the chair of the finance committee could come to all of the discussions that are being had, uh, you know, in the departments, to going through their, their budgets with a fine-tooth comb, which Tim and I did this year. And a lot of things were done behind the scenes, you know, to get the departments to scale it down and, and figure out, you know, what is their wish list, and what, what are we willing to do in order to, that's what I considered the executive budget. So, between Tim and I and the department heads, we, we cut out a lot of stuff that was on the docket before we ever got to the point of bringing it down here. But again, you know, you as the finance chair, you know, I kind of apologize for that. I never really thought to reach out, because you certainly could have been a part of that conversation. I, you know, I, I just thought, we handle it behind the scenes, and then bring it to the committee of the whole, and everybody's there to talk about it so that it doesn't come down to the wire. And we seem to have enough time. But to your note, we didn't really make any changes at that point in time. And then we went into the discussions about the Humane Society and that. So, so we could certainly, I think we can do both. But to Tim's, what he's saying is, we just got to start early. And, and I would like, with your guys' approval, I would like to ask the department heads to, uh, set, give us a quarterly update on their 2025 budget so that we know that they're staying on top of it, and we can better gauge for 2026, what's happening in 2026 by understanding better where we are in 2025, instead of all of a sudden saying, okay. Uh, I think this year it was July, and I said, end of July, I want, you know, the budgets, at least the operational budgets. And that kind of threw everybody into a panic, or not panic, but, you know, they're like, okay, we got to change focus. And, um, and it worked, and in the end, it worked out fine. But, but I think if we're on top of this from, from the get-go, and they're following through on their budgets right away, and staying up on top of them, and they present them during, uh, finance and, uh, property and finance committee quarterly, I think that would help us be able to gauge what we need for 2026. And then outside of that, I think we want to identify our areas of concern. You know, if we're talking about library and Humane Society, and we want to stay on top of the chamber, or if we're saying ultimately, we're ripping the Band-Aid off, like Ryan said, and we're saying, you know what? We don't want any, we don't want to take out any debt in 2026. Well, that's, that's great. It's better to say it now so that we can actually formulate everything in the budget around that, because it's going to be a huge discussion as to how you can even do that, and, and do roads, or not do roads for a year, but, but eventually, you're going to run into a problem with even worse roads. So, I guess I'm just saying, like, this, this right now is the meeting where if we come to a consensus and say, these are the things we want to see for 2026, and we work all the way through 2025 on making sure they're ready for 2026, I think we're going to be in much better shape than waiting till the end of 2025 to start having the discussions. So, um, that's what this meeting is for. If we're ripping off Band-Aids, I want to know. Because it's going to be a lot of work for the next year to make sure that we, you know, address that and figure it out. If we're not, or we're just taking it little by little, you know, steps, uh, you know, we can even do that. And just, if we have a, if we have goals to shoot for, we can shoot for them. But if we're just kind of shooting blind, then we're going to, you know, kind of meander for the rest of the year, and I don't want to do that. That's a waste of time, in my opinion, so. So now's the time.
After you.
I think the first thing we need to do is have that discussion about bonding. Does that, whatever meetings go on after that, will give the direction of what the council decided to do. I think it makes sense to do that in April. We will be seating at least one new council member. And in that time, I mean, I, I personally would like to just talk to Tim a little bit more, dive in on the bonding. Like, I'll ask you a question right now, I don't know if you could answer it, but at current rates, the current pace, when would we pay off all our debt? Is there a year? It's, I don't, it's a quick question, so I don't expect you to have it. But like, that would be one thing I'd want to know. Like, just the current debt, you know, when would we hypothetically, what would be the year we pay that off? And I'd almost, that'd be an interesting thing to know each time we did, take that out for something. And, and nothing's ever taken out debt for directly, right? It's, because the, the borrowing happens and kind of, um, is injected into the budget, and then spending can happen around it. You know, you can't point at one specific thing. Like, you can say roads, but is it roads? Is it, you can say, sometimes it is, I guess, though, with the wastewater and aquatic center. But the year-to-year stuff is basically just an injection into the city budget to cover any deficits?
For the amount that we, for street construction?
So we say it's for streets, right? Is it?
Yeah, because historically, um, probably since I've been here, is that, uh, you know, it was a philosophy that, you know, for our construction projects, that being street construction, is that the, the city has issued debt to support those construction activities, because it's a, it's a capital asset that you're creating. And then that was funded, you know, with obviously the debt issue. I mean, we don't ever issue debt to fund any operating-type expenditures or anything like that. I would advise against that. But that's probably, that's been what the historical, and we've discussed it in pass, you know, occasionally. And there was a, there was a time where I put together something, this was a while ago, about, you know, this was before levy limits, where, okay, we will increase the tax levy to support street construction, and then just obviously then, then stop borrowing for that. But what happened is, is that you had your existing outstanding debt. So what happens when you did that, you get a big spike in the tax rate before it drops off as your debt's being paid off. And at that time, the council really wasn't interested in, you know, having that. And at that time, the council really wasn't interested in, you know, having that spike in the tax rate. Now with levy limits, we have the, we don't have the ability other than through a referendum to raise the tax levy to support those street construction activities. Ironically, though, outside the levy limits, you could increase your your tax levy for debt service payments.
Of course.
So.
Of course.
So that's, that's the catch 22 that a lot of municipalities are in that, you know, like you said, it's like if you want to just like say, we're going to pay cash for it, or you, you know, through the levy, you cannot do that. But you can borrow for it and then it's exempted from those levy limits. It's kind of a, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but then obviously, you know, they they exempted those because they didn't want to hamstring municipalities if they have big projects like our aquatic center that, you know, you wouldn't be able to do that because if you, if you weren't able to fit those debt service payments into your levy limits, you know, you would, you wouldn't be able to do the projects. And that's why they kind of exempt them outside the actual levy limit.
Yeah, good explanation. And I, I think the overall understanding of levy limits and debt servicing and, I mean, why the state wrote that that way is in history. But so a note from what Tim said too, when we're talking about ripping the Band-Aid off, you know, whether we're going to bond or not. It is for investing in infrastructure. So, but yeah, we got to figure that out first. As far as going through finance or not going through finance, I threw that out there because there was a time and and I was not on finance when we came to committee of the whole. I mean, I'm, I was fine with it either way. In regards to the item of feedback, I'm, I'm just giving feedback that it it has not worked. And in the past, when it went through finance, there was people on there that were able to get changes made that then went to the whole council. And I would see it as, you know, every common council meeting, could it be a budget meeting? Well, all the finance reports come up to common councils. So it potentially could be, and I don't necessarily see that as a, a bad thing unless, you know, we get one of those hot button issues and then you take it up and you do what you got to do with it. But overall, I mean, that, that was just a feedback comment is I don't think the committee of the whole has, has worked the way everyone thought it would. And it's been a few years, probably time to reflect on that. And then we need to figure out if, if we bond.
Tim, again, thank you for your 30 years of service this year. In that time, have you, you've been around during the transition for the, for the levy limits? Before the levy limits, were we able to do road construction? Granted, it's, it's a while ago, so the, the money was quite different at that time, but were we able to work that into the operational budget?
No, because that's, like I said, when they wanted to, because you know, you know, you know, street construction was funded with, with a debt issue. And when we looked at using an increase in the tax levy to do it, you know, that spike in the tax rate that I referred to earlier. They, that, that was not an attractive option at the time for the council to want to have that big spike in the tax rate. You know, there, there's a, you know, and it's, it's, yeah, there, there's various ways you can approach, you know, obviously, you know, with, with the debt. You know, thing is, is that, you know, obviously ripping off the Band-Aid and just finding, you know, the, let's see, this year we plan on 1.3, 1,375,000, finding that elsewhere in the budget on the expenditure side. You know, obviously you can also take a phased approach where, you know, you say, okay, here's our, here's, here's our goal. Our goal is to be not issue debt for street construction by whatever five year period. And and you, you, you work towards that goal and phase it in and maybe take advantage of opportunities that present itself through attrition. Because, you know, I bring up attrition because obviously to find that type of money in the budget, you know, you're going to be looking at, you know, since we're a service organization, you know, a large part of our budget is staffing. You know, and you can, you can look at other capital type expenditures, equipment and things like that to help. But eventually that equipment has to be replaced. So you're just kind of pushing it down the road. And then all of a sudden you have a lot of outdated equipment and now you, now what are you going to do? So there's that phased approach, but also then there's obviously looking at alternative revenue sources. You know, obviously, you know, the transportation utility unfortunately is on hold right now due to Supreme Court ruling or just not taking up the case, I should say. You know, and that was one of those funding mechanisms we looked at like over time, using that, you know, increasing that to use to help, you know, bring down the amount that we're borrowing for streets. You know, we, we accomplished that with the stormwater utility fee where in the 25 budget is the first time that, you know, storm sewer construction is not part of the, the debt issue. You know, and then we've been phasing that in over time. So, or obviously the combination of the two or all three, I should say.
Right. Thank you.
I feel like we've, we've had a lot of what were we going to do next, Tim? And I didn't want to lose sight of the things that I thought went well this time around. I personally appreciated the budget summaries from each department. It was really nice to be able to see exactly what the department saw themselves as doing for our community, who worked within that department, what they did in 2024, and then what they planned on doing in 2025. It was much easier for me and I know some members of the public where you could see, just looking at the first one, the city attorney's office does these things. This is the goal for that office. And then you can see how much it's going to cost to accomplish that goal side by side without going into Tim's world where it's all fund categories, where everything is sort of lumped together. So I would, I would appreciate if that process continued where we could break down the budgets by department and have that overview. I also like the quarterly reporting option. One of the things that I struggle with is that we, we approved this budget, but until 2025, we kind of it. Like I don't really know what happened after that, or there's no monitoring outcomes that come with it. So I think a quarterly report would be very helpful. And one thing that I've heard a lot of is that we've, we've talked a lot about cuts. And that's, what do we do to cut the budget? What do we do to whittle it down? And I haven't heard any discussion about what we do or what we need to fix to not have to whittle it down. How do we bring in more revenue, even if it's that little pieces of, how do we figure out who's not registering their cats or dogs? We know there's more cats or dogs in the city. How do we figure that out and bring in that revenue? Or how do we ensure that people are getting the right permits and going through the right processes without going on a crusade of finding people for ordinance violations? Or making businesses, making the city look more appealing to businesses or having a requirement for grant funding? I work in grants and I would love to see the city bring in more grant dollars to pay for things like a fire truck or a river wall. Jake?
Alternative funding, it's been a discussion we've had quite a bit and then it evolves and things change, like transportation utility. I do, there's got to be more opportunity for grants out there. That's been talked about a lot. I think bringing someone in that specializes in that, maybe that'd be a further discussion, but if, if someone was here writing grants 40 hours a week and I'm, I'm sure their job would pay for itself pretty quickly. The, the other alternative revenue, because it's a tax levy basis and the only way to start getting more out of that is net new construction, right? I think Kyle's not here, but in community development, we need to look at areas where that's possible within city limits. Other, I know there was a, there is a section of the city that was parted off as and held for a period of time here to be a highway that I know Kyle's discussed before that, that we may look to open that up and, you know, have some construction there. I mean, you talk about an area like that where you're getting more new city streets, multiple housing, you know, whatever would happen there. That's, I'm not saying we, we go do that immediately, but if we're going to talk about raising revenue, that would be one way. This is all sitting in this forest right now. I mean, if you want to have new construction in the city and bring in new tax dollars, you have to have the areas to build it. And I don't, I mean, we got business parks and stuff, we got spots in those. So I don't think that the answer is another one of those. I think it would be somewhere that we could open up that could be a new neighborhood or something of that sort. And and those things would bring in new revenue grants and, and looking at areas that the city can make easier to construct so we can get those net new construction dollars.
To start on that note, I'm working closely with Kyle to, you know, so I have a better understanding of exactly what properties we own. Most of the properties that we own are kind of bits and pieces that you can't really build on and nobody else wanted them. So we kind of own little bits and pieces around the city. There are about, you know, some, and we can't go too far into it, I guess, just because it's, it can be kind of confusing and you don't want to get people's hopes up. But there's a few parcels that we still own that we're looking to develop and I, I'm going to push for that because we're not going to do it. And they're just kind of sitting there and I would much rather get the one, allow the private industry to, to do that. And then we can collect the tax revenue off of those. But once those are developed, and I'm saying it's less than three, we're landlocked. We have, you know, we have no more, you know, we have the, the commercial park and we have the industrial parks. But we're pretty well landlocked. So at some point in time, and this is just my take on it, we're going to have to go up. You know, like do away with some of the old houses and be able to go up on blocks if we're going to, if we have to continue to to find housing for people because we just, we can't go, we can't go beyond our borders. And I don't see anybody wanting us to annex them into, you know, into our community. And they got to, they got to initiate it and I don't see that coming. So, I mean, it's, it's definitely in the works and, and I see exactly what you're saying. And we work on it pretty much day to day in terms of what's there and, and what that's going to look like. And as for grant writing, Jeff's been very integral and passionate about getting that going. As soon as I got in, I started working with Tim and Emily to figure out what it would take. And you're, you're absolutely right. It takes somebody to be on it 40 hours. You know, like that's their job or at least a, a big part of their job to be able to stay on top of it. And we got to be able to find that bandwidth. You know, right now inside our organization, who's got the time to be able to take that on as well as do the rest of their duties? And between Emily and myself, and I think we're going to keep diving in and figure it out because it's an important part of being able to bring in new revenue. Of course, you usually got to match it. So it's, it's not as simple as just getting free money. I guess it's, you know, we definitely have to budget for it and know well what we're doing ahead of time so that we can plan for it accordingly in the budget. So, but again, working on it and now whatever you guys need updates on it, we can put it on finance committee for updates on both of those if you want.
Yeah, I want to comment on the, the person in the splitting out the duties for grant writing. That's a lot, it's a lot of work to put together all of the pieces for a grant and it's definitely going to take some significant effort. It is also a very rare person that you're going to find who can find, write and submit grants. That person is going to cost a lot of money, way more than what anyone would expect because they're, they're rare. And they're already hired by organizations who I don't know if we would be even interested in paying that amount of money for one of T.
Right.
But I do think it's a manageable thing that we can figure out how to do with the current staff that we have. And I do think that Emily is one of those great untapped resources that
Absolutely.
we can utilize.
Yep.
Go ahead, Jake.
This isn't say in terms of your comment about landlocked going up building. There was housing surveys done by the city or the county. It was a while ago. It might've been pre-COVID, but I mean, housing has, when those surveys were being ran, I don't know when the last one was, but I'm sure it would be the same. Housing was continually marked as one of the things that needed to be addressed. I was here for one of the proposed projects that didn't happen and I'm not, I'm not going to get into why it did, but essentially people were saying that they do want access to newer housing. And my take on that is they mean like apartment buildings, duplexes, et cetera. So obviously that all is, comes from the private sector, but I would be interested to hear what we can do to entice these people to come here more to do that. And whether it's some type of incentive or reducing regulation on that in the city to get that here. I think it would make it more likely for people to come and then with that more revenue as well.
I do agree with you 100%. I'm working on it to do all the above to reduce the regulations and and incentivize. The downside is, we all know, like, because costs have gone up exponentially. So it's, it's even harder for us to say, well, we can do this for you because of the amount of money that, that's going to take for us to put in the infrastructure. When it's going to be tough to recuperate it, even through taxes. So then you start looking at, you know, biting bullets in order to make stuff happen that isn't in the best interest of the city. But yet you still want to keep it going and hope that down the road, this inflation and everything else kind of evens out because something's, something's got to straighten out. Yeah. And again, it's, that's a whole another rabbit hole we'd have to go down to, to have that conversation. So.
Just on little things though, I mean, I know at Parks and Rec, again, we, we are scared to raise the price of the pool by a buck or so. And it's just like, come on, it's, it's packed. But I don't think people will stop going to the pool if we change it from seven to eight bucks. I mean, or, or if we do start, and I still think that Jake and I know the, the non-resident thing, I still think some of that. But we, we shy away from it because we're worried about it. We're worried about it. We're worried about it. And I, that should be a, a revenue generating place, especially with what it cost us and just that. And, and I mean, I know when the, at like, for instance, at the Y, we had the swim team at the Y, this is just a little thing, but it's an example. They decided to have, you know, to go to the rapids and we have the, we run the swimming thing now. We charge way less than the Y was charging. And there, we have all these fees that, I mean, it's great. We're city, it's, you know, it's great for our residents and that type of thing. But everything we do here is cheap. And, and, and inflation is through the roof and we didn't change anything. I mean, I would, I don't think people would notice if we raised concessions at events. I don't think people would, I just don't think that. I think we have to be less, I don't want to say that we need to be expensive, but I just think, I know it's a little thing, but we just need to under, we just need to understand that everything is up and fees and things like that can be, I know it's a tax, whatever you want to look at it, but it's something, we're, we're not making enough money on the pool or some of these events. So it just seems like we got to cover it more.
Gotcha.
I'd like to comment on a few things I've heard tonight. The grant writing thing is something, it's in a very preliminary stage. We're going to be working on that next week. We are going to be diligently pursuing grant money. It's too early to get into specific conversations, but I know we're going to make some things happen. You know, not that that's going to solve problems, but it'll help. I talked with Tim here a few weeks ago. I got some numbers. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong here. The city right now is $22 million in debt at the end of 2025. And the interest we're paying on that is $603,000. Okay, those were some numbers I thought that people should be aware of. A year. The aquatic center, we owe $8 million on the aquatic center. The East River Bank project, $2 million and the fire station, 2.5 million. The East River Bank Project, $2 million, and the fire station, 2.5 million. Those numbers are accurate, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, I just thought that people should hear those numbers to kind of get an idea of what we're actually looking at, you know, and, uh, numbers, the numbers ain't ever going to be where you want them, but if we know what we're starting with, it gives you a better idea where we can go with all this, in my opinion. I just thought that that should come up in this conversation.
Thank you. I think we're never going to have enough money and we're never going to have enough people. And that's just budgeting. But by doing things explicitly to help us increase revenue, even if it's a dollar to get into the pool, that helps decrease the amount of money that we spend on administration, which in return decreases the amount of money that we need to take out in debt to fix our potholes. So I think that's all a really great place to start for 2026.
Okay.
Anybody have comments? Tim?
I was just going to say on the, you know, on the, the fees, revenues and things like that, I think, you know, what might be a good idea as part of the budget process is that we adopt an annual fee schedule where all the fees that we charge, whether it's for permits, admission to rec programs, to what we charge title companies for, you know, research and things like that, that, so that at least on an annual basis, we're always looking at as an organization and looking at like, okay, maybe we raise this fee or do this, and then what is the impact that on the budget? And I think that would be a good thing, that we have a comprehensive fee schedule that we adopt along with the budget.
Agreed.
Tim, do you think it would make sense to, you run into this, you know, where you don't raise fees a small amount continuously or a a regular amount every year, and then all of a sudden, you're, in one year, you're doubling it? Would it make sense to just tack on a, a, some kind of a, a increase in all of those fees every year that's just automatic?
Yeah, I mean, you could. I mean, it's just, you know, obviously, you know, smaller incremental increases every year is a lot more palatable to the, the users as opposed to nothing, nothing, and all of a sudden, you know, a large spike.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that's something that we can look at as far as, you know, kind of putting that together, you know, and and getting some metrics so we could say, okay, if we increase fees across the board X percent, this is the type of revenue that we can anticipate. Okay?
I don't know if I'm totally sold on a standard increase per year on all of our fees, only because it sort of takes away the, the manual and the, the forced assessment of it, where if we increase fees, I'm picking on the pool now, if we increase fees by a dollar and we see that our annual fee, or our annual, the number of people who purchased an annual pass decreased by 10%, we really need to think about that dollar or assess if that was the reason. But if we're automatically increasing it and we have no reason to look at it, we have no way to determine that that's on a steady decline. So by the yearly assessment and the yearly fee schedule, we have a better ability to keep a good pulse on what is an appropriate fee for service for our community. Jake?
Yeah, while we're talking about fees, I just want to come out and say that I am not for increasing any fees for residents of the city. If we want to talk about permitting fees for people come out from outside the city and and do construction, or, you know, non-resident users of whatever program it be, everybody's talking about the Aquatic Center, the Aquatic Center, that's a different conversation. And the reason I'm not in favor of it, and I'll, I'll go to the Aquatic Center for this, is I'm paying for it on my property taxes currently, and then I'm paying a fee to use the Aquatic Center on top of it as a resident. It is much more beneficial if you don't live in the city to not have to pay that on your taxes and just come get a pass whenever you want. And mind you, some people with, whether it's the fire station or the East River Bank, some people don't use any of those things. I mean, you could argue everybody uses the fire station, but some people probably never walk the East River Bank, some people probably never use the Aquatic Center, and and you could look at projects across the board. I got the numbers on this a while back, but it's like, for every $100,000, you're assessed you're paying, you know, $80 towards the Aquatic Center debt every year. So if you look at like what it yearly cost is for a family on that, if they live in a $200,000 house or $300,000, I mean, you can incrementally step that up, you're paying $80 for each $100,000 plus your season pass. Or if you go get a daily pass, you're probably even getting a worse deal. So I would not be in favor of anything increasing fees with residents. I think what we do get into is we do make, I mean, we talked about this with EMS, we've talked about it with the Aquatic Center, we've talked about everything, is, you know, everything's funded by our residents, but then you can live right outside our landlocked city here and come and get essentially the same deal. And it's something that, whether you know it or not, you're paying it in your rent or you're paying it on your property tax bill, you're already paying for that or a part of that. And I think that's where I, I just see, I don't think you can ever even it out, and you certainly want people to come and do business in your city, but I don't think the residents should have to pay more for that to happen. I think it should be the other way around.
Good point.
Any other discussion on fees, 2025 feedback, what we're going to do moving into 2026? Okay, I'm going to try to summarize, unless Tim's got really good notes. All right. So it sounds like what we want to do is in April, meet to decide as a group, our bond limits, what our overall goal is for 2026 budget. That's our first step in making sure we're on the right path. That will give Mayor Zachary the information to go to the departments and work with the departments and Tim to be able to start to develop their budget. In the meantime, we're going to implement a quarterly report so that we have an accurate account of where we're at and can easily start planning for 2026 budgeting and stay on top of that. For 2026, we will introduce a fee schedule. And
Matty?
Go ahead, Dean.
I didn't want to interrupt, but wouldn't we want to do that with the, the April thing? Wouldn't we want to do that in May? Because the new council won't be there till May.
Any objection to May?
I think if we're going to do goals, we might as well wait till the new council's in.
Yeah, that's fair. And then, I didn't hear any objection to keeping the budget summary for departments, so I'd say keep those in for 2026.
I agree.
Did I miss anything? Any final suggestions for improvement? Great.
Just wanted to say I appreciate you guys coming tonight and putting in the extra time to have the conversations to get us through 2025, starting and get us ready for 2026. So thank you for all the work you guys do.
Just one thing, I think the, the other thing I kind of heard a consensus on is just moving up the budget timeline so that we're starting the discussions earlier. Is that kind of what I?
Let's start talking 2027 in August of 25.
Way too early.
Want to kill me?
All right. With no further comments, questions, or suggestions, meeting adjourned at 7:19. Thank you.